Welcome, everyone. This evening, we have Pennsylvania ambulance. Mr. Caramelli, will you like to start? Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Brannetti is going to start?
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for letting us here. I think before I start, I want to really clarify what my intentions are today and what my intentions are specifically not. So my intentions today is to speak.
I can't hear you. Sorry.
So my intentions, I wanted to clarify two things before I start. One, thanks for allowing us to come today. I want to speak to what my intentions are and what my intentions are not. I'm going to speak to facts as it relates to EMS services within the city of Scranton, and I will give you reference to those facts. What I am not intending to do, and I do not want it to come across that I'm doing, I'm not here to be disparaging to Chief Judge. I am not here to be disrespectful to Chief Judge. I will need to address statements made by Chief Judge, the statements that I believe he was given, the information from Fitch and Associates. I am addressing the factual basis of those statements, not the character of Chief Judge. I respect Chief Judge's commitment to his community, and I respect the courage that he has to do the job that he does. They are my intentions and what I do not intend to do. This is not to be disparaging to Chief Judge. Next slide. So the presentation today should be maybe 15 minutes. I'll do brief introductions for the three of us. I'll talk about response times. I'll address some of the public statements that were made. I'll talk about some of the community service initiatives that we do, and then we can close. And it should give us a lot of time for any dialogue or back and forth. If throughout the entire discussion, if there's stuff that you want to bring up, talk, feel free, interrupt me, and we can talk and have some discourse back and forth. So, starting with introductions, I'll start with myself. I'm an emergency medicine physician. I've been practicing in northeastern Pennsylvania since 1998. I was born and raised in northeastern Pennsylvania. For the past, and don't hold me to the exact numbers, I've been for about the past 25 years, I've been either the de facto volunteer, non-compensated medical director for the Lackawanna County 911 Center, either solely or as part of a group panel of physicians. My business partner, Chris Tarmelli, is a paramedic. He's a volunteer firefighter, and he's a police officer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. To my left is Dr. Sean Morgan. Dr. Sean Morgan, prior to medical school, was a paramedic. He did his, he graduated medical school from Georgetown Medical Center. He did his residency in emergency medicine, became board certified in emergency medicine. He then became certified as a field physician, meaning he can treat people in the street for emergency care outside of a hospital setting. He then went on and did another year fellowship, subspecializing in the specialty of EMS medicine, and then becoming board certified in EMS medicine. He was the assistant medical director for EMS services in the city of Denver, Colorado. He is now the medical director of Pennsylvania ambulance. He actively responds and delivers care within the city of Scranton. So if there's a 911 call, you'll see that physician truck at times responding to calls, usually your sickest calls, and he will be the one commanding the scene and delivering care. Of all of us in the room, Dr. Morgan is the expert on EMS care delivery. Next slide, Candace. So this is the first statement I want to talk about regarding response times. There was a statement provided by Fitch and Associates that we have an 18-minute total response time by private ambulance service. Fitch and Associates stated that this data came from the Lackawanna County 911 comm center. We queried the comm center. We asked for their data for the past three years. We could not find the statistic. The comm center did provide us with data. 2022, 2023, and 2024, up until July 1st, July 1st, 2024. We had an average response time, as you see, between seven and eight minutes, and a median response time between six minutes and 21 seconds and seven minutes. So the next logical thing that should go off in your head is, what does that mean and how good is that? Next slide, please. So here's data pre-COVID. 2017, the Journal of the American Medical Association, 1.7 million EMS calls across the United States. They were urban, suburban, and rural EMS calls. You see that the median response time was seven minutes, with the mean response time of seven minutes and 50 seconds, almost exactly to the care that we're providing to the city of Scranton. Next slide. So how does that compare to New York City? Pre-COVID, in the middle, medical emergencies, as reported by ABC News, New York City was in 2014, eight minutes. Currently, in 2024, they are 14 minutes for medical emergencies. That is double the time it takes us to respond to medical emergencies in the city of Scranton. Next slide. I've included a position statement here from the National Association of EMS Physicians. It includes all of these other governing bodies that endorse this. The essence of this statement is essentially, you shouldn't weigh too heavily and lean too heavily on response times. Next slide. Reason being, the majority, the vast majority of your EMS calls do not require immediate life-threatening care. To lean exclusively on response times increases your cost and increases your risk of accidents. Next slide. Within this position statement, the National Association of EMS Physicians gives you five areas that you, as a governing body, should look at to see if you're providing and delivering comprehensive care to the constituents of the city of Scranton. And we'd be happy to talk through each and every one of them. If you want to do it after the discussion, we'd be happy to do it. We can get very in-depth in how we approach each and every one of these five areas. I've included here some other papers for you to take a look at. If you look down on the right, it's the U.S. Department of Transportation. These are all papers stating that there should be a very judicious use of lights and sirens in EMS response. Next slide. So this slide, I titled it "Safety for All," and I think it's important, what our mission, all of our mission is in EMS. And when I say "safety for all," I mean safety for the patient in the back of the ambulance. I mean safety for the crew driving and treating that patient in the ambulance, safety for other vehicles and passengers and drivers on the streets, and safety for pedestrians. Some of you, you know, we've been around a little bit longer than some others. If you remember, maybe back in 1980, late 80s, 90s, there was a now-defunct ambulance company responding lights and sirens on the main street of Peckville. They fatally struck and ran over a young boy. That's something we can never allow to happen. That's why the use of lights and sirens should be very, very strictly monitored. Next slide. So these are public statements that were made. The first statement, if you call me at any given time and ask me how many ambulances are currently on duty in the city, I couldn't tell you. And the 911 comm center couldn't tell you either. So I mean, I say this, and I'll do respect to the chief. The chief raised this question to me two years ago when he and the mayor visited our station, and I'll give him the same response that I gave then. We would be happy to sit down with you and whatever cadence you would like, and show you what our staffing patterns are, what our response times are, what our QA system is, how we assess skills on an ongoing basis. We'd love to be as collaborative and engaged with the chief as he would like us. The second statement, I'm assuming came from Fitch and Associates, that the Lackawanna County comm center couldn't tell you either, that's false. If anyone knows how ambulances are dispatched within the Lackawanna County, the comm center has a map. Okay? Our vehicles, I'm going to use the word GPS, it's probably the wrong technical term, but our GPS have a locator in them. The comm center sees where every single one of our ambulances are within the county. They know if we are on a call, if we are on a fire assist, if we are responding to the call, if we are waiting at the hospital to drop off a patient, or if we in ready status for a 911 call. So when the 911 call comes in to the comm center, they can see who the closest available ambulance is and dispatch that ambulance appropriately. That's how the system works. I don't know where Fitch and Associates came up with that statement. Next slide, Candace. So the chief made this statement, "We will not be going out on broken hips or potential fractures or falls." I'm assuming this came from Dr. Hinkley. This, to me, Candace, if you can, next slide, shows a complete misunderstanding of what EMS is. So your hip fractures, your wrist fractures, your collarbone fractures, your shoulder fractures in the elderly resulting from a fall, 10% to 20% of the time is a cardiac event. For that statement to be made shows that whoever fathered that statement does not understand EMS.
So, excuse me, so like a cardiac event or some bleeding involved, internal bleeding, right?
I'm sorry. Couldn't hear.
You said a cardiac event is related to them most of the time, but there's internal bleeding, too, that's very dangerous that could happen, right? With hip fractures and...
It can. Bleeding in itself, you know, in a fracture, depending on the type of fracture, is a smaller minority of the signs and symptoms. The cardiac event, what would be a cardiac arrhythmia, your heart going into a funny rhythm that doesn't, your brain doesn't get perfused with blood for a couple of seconds, and then you drop.
I understand, yeah.
Okay? Your heart going into what's called a heart block, where the heart, instead of beating too fast, now beats too slow. Your brain doesn't get any blood, you drop. That's what I mean when I say 10% to 20% cardiac events. Thank you.
Doc. I'm one of the guys that's been around for a few years. I'm the race director for the Steentown Marathon, and the statement you made earlier, I think, is completely accurate in that, do you remember when there was ambulance wars back in the mid-90s? People were fighting over territories? I believe the Steentown Marathon solved that problem, because we had about four different ambulance companies show up at our first meeting, and they started squabbling and fighting who's going to handle it on race day. And I told them, I said, "Listen, this race starts in Susquehanna County, finishes in downtown Scranton, 14 communities. I said, 'We need every single one of you involved. So go in that other room, figure out what you need to do.'" And ultimately, it ended up being 911. So when somebody goes down in our race, 911 knows where the closest ambulance is, and they dispatch it, because they know they're monitored, they know exactly where they're at, and that's the way it's handled. So I just want to affirm that statement, because I'm familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you. So this public statement by Dr. Hinkley, if any of the statements that were made, this is the one that kind of rubs me the wrong way the most. I think this is a complete arbitrary statement and not factual at all. I'm going to focus on the last part of it, where he states that we're covering the city of Scranton, Old Forge, Music, et cetera, et cetera, with one ambulance. We showed you our response times. We're responding to, you know, so far in 2024, 7,000 calls in seven minutes. It's physically impossible to do that with one ambulance. Okay? I don't know where this statement came from. It's arbitrary. It's not true. Next. Chief asked if we would ask for a subsidy to meet metrics, and what would that amount be? So first, we're twice as good as New York City, and we're doing it at zero cost to the city of Scranton. We don't need a subsidy, and our metrics are spot on. This statement, I'm assuming this is data given to Chief by Fitch and Associates, that way you're in no network, the current provider, meaning we do not participate with any insurance. So currently, we participate with Medicare, medical assistance, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Geisinger, and for auto insurance, by law, we follow Act 6. There was a statement made that we should be following soft billing. Aside from my duties as, you know, helping my partners run an independent, private emergency medicine practice, for the past 25 years, I've ran a coding and billing company, not only for our practice, but at one point, we were doing, you know, many, many, hundreds of thousands of claims a year. I don't know what soft billing means. I know that if a patient has a copay and a deductible, you're compelled and obligated to attempt to collect. Otherwise, it would be noncompliant. Next slide. From profit to purpose. You hear a lot of times the word "profit," and unfortunately, people use it as a dirty word, but profits are necessary. Profits are necessary when you run your household. You want to make sure you have a profit at the end of the year, in case you want to plan for a new roof or plan to get your kids to college. Profits are necessary when you run a city to be able to plan for future events and reinvest in your community. Profits are also necessary when you're running an ambulance company, so you can reinvest in your company, make sure you provide the right resources and newest equipment to your providers, and also to enhance the community. And we at Pennsylvania ambulance put our money, our profit, where our mouth is. Next slide. So for the year 2022, 2023, and 24, these are the number of fire assists that we go on. So what does that mean? So every time an engine in the city of Scranton gets dispatched, we send an ambulance there just to support. We're no ask for compensation, no chance of compensation. We just do it, because we're good teammates.
Excuse me, are these numbers the city only, or county, or the city?
City. So collaborative public safety. There's going to be a lot on this slide. If you want to go into specifics, Dr. Morgan can answer on the specifics. I'll hit the highlights, okay? Candace? So in 2019, we did Scranton PD, Narcan administration, and training for all of them. Next. In 2016, we donated 11 AEDs to the city, Scranton Fire and Scranton PD. In 2017, we did Stop the Bleeding training and campaign with Scranton Fire and Scranton PD. In 2018, we led the way and planned and organized an active shooter training exercise. In 2019, we did training for Scranton Fire and Scranton PD on tactical EMS. In 2020, we all remember 2020, we donated PPE to Scranton Fire Department. 2021, we donated individual first aid kits to all special operation members. And in 2025, right now, we're donating an ambulance to, to nonprofit organizations, with our goal is that ambulance is going to be stocked and supplied with equipment, medical gear, and providers from the two other nonprofits to go out and actually treat the homeless in the streets and provide medical care to the homeless in the streets. That's our commitment to the city of Scranton. Next slide. When you take a look around at all your large events, your Steentown Marathon, your La Festa, your St. Patrick's Day Parade, look who's sitting on the sidelines. We overstaff those days with extra trucks, just to ensure that your constituents are safe, and we can respond in a very efficient and timely manner, and are prepared for increased call volume. That's our commitment to our community. No cost, no taxes. That's what you get from Pennsylvania ambulance. I'm done with my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
So has the city ever approached you to contract, providing ambulances for the city?
They have not. Two years ago, we had invited the mayor and chief judge out to, I'm sorry, we invited the mayor and chief judge out to our headquarters in Scranton, and to, you know, just to introduce ourselves, show them our building. That was when Commonwealth Health had closed, and we had taken them over. And at that time, we had mentioned, you know, we'd be happy to contract, report to, you know, collaborate, work together, and give any type of reporting or data that you guys, council, or the chief's office would require. We would be happy to enter in a contract and work with you guys to even make these response times and these type of things better collaboratively. So I guess the answer to your question is no, but we are definitely willing.
Okay. Thank you.
Building off of his question, you actually answered the question I was going to ask next. Would you be interested, which obviously you would? What would that entail? If you were to cover the city, if you were to get into a contract with the city, would you be buying new ambulances, hiring new employees to cover that ground?
So we're already doing it currently, you know? The response times are there, we're covering it. We believe we do an excellent job, based on the data that we've shown you guys today. So there wouldn't be a lot of change on our end. I think it would be more reporting and working together with chief judge and his officers to see what works best, whether we get in here, whether we're stationed in firehouses or we, you know, different system status locations, which is how we place our ambulances throughout the city, but those type of things. But I think it would be more administrative. You know, we have just purchased two new, 10 new ambulances this year. We try to do that every year. We're constantly updating our fleet. We're always hiring, and we're looking to work with the city collaboratively in that type of an agreement.
Chris, do you currently have contracts with other, the surrounding communities?
We do.
Like agreements?
We do. If you'd like me to give you a list, you know, real quick off the top of my head. So we back up both Oliphant and Blakely. We're primary for Dunmore, Old Forge, Taylor, Music, Troop. We're primary EMS provider for all of those towns.
So I guess one of the questions is, if two calls come in at the same time, one's in Scranton, one's in Dunmore, are you going to Scranton first, or are you going to Dunmore first, because you have a contract?
We're going to whichever one is, we're going to, we wouldn't pick one or the other because of, you know, no, we would respond based on whatever the priority. If we had enough ambulances, obviously, we're handling both always, or however many stack on us.
Right.
But if there was a priority call, we would pick whichever call was priority, if there was a reason we were down, or call for mutual aid. There's times when obviously, just like the fire department or the police department, you know, myself being a police officer, we have to call for help. Or when I'm on a fire ground, we have to call for help. We can't handle everything. So there is a few, there is those instances where we cannot handle every call, but, you know, we handle the vast majority of every call without any backup or mutual aid, is the word, from anyone else.
One of the arguments to support an EMS or an ambulance company for the city of Scranton has to do with the fact that we're dealing with a private provider, and you guys can up and leave tomorrow if you chose to be. If we provided you with a $0 contract, which is similar to what you have at these other communities, correct?
Yes.
Would you be willing to include that for one year, you would have to give us one year notice before pulling out? Because what I was told is they can leave tomorrow, and we have no emergency ambulances.
That's an excellent question. And I, we would absolutely be willing to do that, but I'll further on that. You know, in the presentation that was given, they said in 1999, Redding Ambulances just packed up and closed. I guess that could happen. I'm going to tell you that I've been doing this for 15 years as the CEO of Lackawanna Ambulance, and now 12 years of the owner of an owner of Pennsylvania ambulances. I'm a police officer, a paramedic, a firefighter in this community. I'm here to stay. We're not going anywhere. We're not walking away. We're not closing our doors. So yeah, I will absolutely give you a one-year commitment. I'll give you a two-year commitment. We have no intentions. We could always get together and meet and collaborate and talk about, hey, guys, we need to do this or do that. That's what you do when you work together.
Sure.
So yeah, we would absolutely be willing to give a one-year commitment.
How do we resolve this difference that's in this report about response times? When, I was looking at it here, and it was...
So, you know, the response times, I'm not really sure.
They're telling us 1803, fire 933 to response, EMS 1803, and all 1721. So 1803 is, that's 10 minutes longer than what's, what you guys are telling us today.
I was just as confused when I saw those numbers, how that Fitch and Associates arrived them. We weren't privy to it. We haven't seen that report. We don't know how that, you know, what calculator they used. But what we did was, we reached out to the Lackawanna County comm center, who dispatches, and that's from the time we get the call, from not, you know, three minutes to enter the call, or, I can't account for that. I account for the time that Penn Ambulances gets to dispatch, the same as if the fire department was to do it, and the time we arrive on scene. What, you know, that's the time that we have given you. We got those numbers that are on that slide, and we'll give you afterwards, are directly from the 911 center, from...
Okay. And under the current arrangement, the city of Scranton does not pay Pennsylvania ambulance for any of your services, correct?
Correct.
In terms of individuals who, obviously, the city of Scranton, the demographics in the city of Scranton are a lot different than maybe Dunmore or Peckville, Archibald, Taylor, Wolf Forge. In terms of economically challenged residents who many times need your services, so in a situation where you're, when you get a 911 call, you're going regardless of what somebody's economical, economic situation is, correct?
Yes. If we're dispatched, we're responding.
So in terms of the billing piece, how does that work if some, it turns out somebody, they don't even have any medical insurance? You picked up somebody that, you know, unfortunately, they don't have medical insurance.
Yeah, and so, one, that's extremely rare right now.
Okay.
Two, you have to attempt collections, but it says right up on our website, if you have a financial need or hardship, call us. And we work with people all the time.
Okay.
There's no money. There's no money.
Okay. Let me ask you this. The crisis that we're facing now with potentially Regional and Moses Taylor, Regional has an emergency room, correct, right now?
That is correct.
And does Moses Taylor still have one?
No.
They don't. Okay, so there's two. There's Geisinger, and there's Regional. Oftentimes, like I'll go for walks up in the odd park sometimes, and I'll see, I'm trying to understand, like, a lot of times, I'll see ambulances, and they might not even be offensive, any ambulance, but I'll see ambulances sitting outside of Geisinger, maybe parked in front of the Everheart Museum. What is the purpose for something like that?
There is no purpose.
There is no purpose.
There is no purpose. That is unfortunately a national issue. It's more prevalent currently in our current community. There's lack of hospital beds in our current community. And so when you see ambulances backed up in the bay...
They're waiting to get in?
They're waiting to get in. We can't unload the patient.
Well, okay.
What we're currently seeing is long wait times at the ERs, at all the ERs. You know, there's also, we didn't mention Lehigh, Indy, and City, but, you know, we go to all three ERs, and we're seeing long wait times, sometimes hours to two-hour wait time, and it's tying up the ambulances. And that's one reason why I believe it's the response times of a fire department with three or four ambulances, it just would not work, even with four, because there's times when I have, that are night, six, seven ambulances tied up on the wait time at the hospital, waiting to get out. If we were back pre-COVID, those response times would be even better, because we're tied up now and unable to staff. What we do when that happens is, with multiple... What we do when that happens is with multiple of us, myself, Dr. Morgan, a few of our other operation guys, take trucks home. We have quick response vehicles and we'll put a page out that, you know, the way ER times are long and we'll jump in the trucks and we'll staff them and respond to calls. So you have to have a plan for that too because it does happen where we have six, seven, eight trucks tied up for hours at a time at the different local hospitals. They're doing their best, we're working together, we're trying to resolve it, but there's no, there hasn't been a resolution yet.
Dr. Bernetti, so you, I'm trying to understand all this. So you are part owner of Pennsylvania Ambulance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you've been for 25 years the volunteer medical director for the 911 center, correct?
That is correct.
And are you also an emergency room physician at Geisinger?
I work at Geisinger. I'm not employed by Geisinger. We're a private independent group, been a private independent group since 1998.
Oh, so you work, you work at Geisinger but not in the emergency room area?
No, I work in the emergency room.
Okay. Because the emergency room is separate from Geisinger, correct?
The emergency professional component, the emergency physicians are a separate entity from Geisinger.
And that's who you're with?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Just trying to understand all this.
Going back to some earlier questions, are we the, is Scranton the only municipality in Lackawanna County that is not under a contract?
Yes.
Okay. And then also an earlier question, Mr. King asked about response times. They said, you know, Dunmore has a, has a contract, but Scranton does not have a contract. When the call comes in, when you're looking at those calls, you said you would respond to whatever ambulance was closer, it wouldn't matter whether there's a contract or not. With some of those calls, are they tiered on a hierarchy of needs where one, like a, you know, whatever ailment that individual has is, is listed as, as we need to get there faster than another?
There you go.
So the answer is...
You have the ambulance.
Right, right. So when we get dispatched, we don't know who we have a contract, the teams do not know who we have a contract with or nor is that discussed. We respond when we're dispatched, plain and simple. Two, over the past 25 years, myself and then there was other physicians who helped participate, we wrote the guidelines for, if you will, tiering EMS. Based on what, BLS, ALS. ALS being the sicker, basic life support being, you know, the non-emergent, the ankle sprains, stuff like that. The vast, vast majority of your patients do not require a response time under 10 minutes. And if you take a look at that, that's provided a lot of the data that I supported and gave to you guys.
Yeah, I was looking at how we're to dispatch and although I took, no, it might not be on contract, it may be dispatched as to what need the individual patient had.
Yeah, and understand we have more, so I'm assuming it's implicit in your question that there's only one ambulance and which, where's it going to go? Is it going to go to Dunmore? Is it going to go to Scranton? And that's not the case. And I mean, it can in extreme circumstances get there, but I think when you're making decisions, we don't make decisions based on extreme circumstances, we make it on what's common and unusual. So, you know, for instance, Saturday night, we had eight vehicles in the city of Scranton, operating in the city of Scranton. And we did that because the volume was up and we just had to move vehicles around, call people from home and support it. We're responsible, I apologize, we're responsible for delivering that care. The reason why Chris and I started this, back to your question, Mr. King, about up and leaving is because we saw EMS going to a national agency and we didn't want that. We worked for many years together collaboratively, building Lackawanna Ambulance and we saw it got sold out from underneath us to a national agency that can up and go at any time that they want. And we said, that's not going to happen. We live here, we grew up here and it's our responsibility, me as a physician, Chris as a paramedic, to take care of our, our community. And that's what we chose to do and continue to choose to do.
So do 100% of your calls come from Comp Center or do you have private callers?
There's private callers.
You have private callers. So basically you don't have, say, where that ambulance is going. So if 911 dispatches it, like we said before, do you prioritize calls? You don't know what the call is. You just, 911 sends a vehicle there and that's it. So there's no way that you can prioritize that.
BLS or ALS, they'll dispatch.
Right, but you have no control at all.
So Comp Center will dispatch the call, whether it's basic life support, when we say BLS and ALS, advanced life support, you know, paramedic, IVs, monitors, that type of stuff, you know, for the more serious calls. Obviously if there was a, you know, a broken finger call came in and a cardiac arrest and there was, like you said to your point, one ambulance available, we would handle the cardiac arrest and stack the other one. That doesn't happen often, but in that case, yes, you would handle the more priority call. We, what we do is 911 center dispatches the calls out and then we have an internal dispatch center with, you know, you guys are welcome to come out and visit us and see us. We have a state-of-the-art internal dispatch center with a computer-aided dispatch, it's called a CAD, where we then red dispatch the call out, we echo it back out to our ambulances and, you know, make sure the most appropriate ambulance is going and we collaborate together with the Comp Center.
So to get this straight, 911, do they directly dispatch to your vehicles or did they send the call to you and you relay to your vehicles?
They put it out over, over a channel that we, that we monitor, we worked, we relay to the vehicles.
So you relay it. So 911 calls go to you and then you choose which vehicle to send?
Nope. Comp Center's picking the vehicle.
Okay.
And then we're just tracking it and working together. If we thought that that vehicle wasn't the most appropriate or we had another one that may be coming on shift that's closer that they weren't aware of, we may call them and say, hey, we have a truck here, it's closer, handle that. But they are picking the vehicle from a screen on the, at the Comp Center where they could see what trucks are in service and out of service, ALS or BLS, and they pick the, they pick the most appropriate, closest unit for the call.
Okay, so if someone calls right now and there's a heart attack on, right on the corner outside here goes a 911, they dispatch that ambulance?
Correct. They will pick, they will...
You listen to it?
We do.
And if you want to change the vehicle coming, you can do that.
We put it in, we enter it. We also dispatch it out to, through our system and our truck calls responding to the 911 center en route. So that's how the times, you know, they, the call does come directly from 911 and they do pick the ambulances for all 911 calls, yes.
Okay.
So then when is Dr. Morgan called up? How is that decision made?
So it just kind of depends. So my, I split my time between clinical in the hospital and sometimes I'm pre-hospital. And so there are times where there are big incidents, whether there's a building collapse or overturned tractor trailer that I would, you know, be asked to respond to the scene to kind of help with that. So I don't go on every single call, but I do listen out to kind of see where my services would be needed.
Thank you.
You know, and just to add to that, he takes his vehicle home at night. There's times where we call him out and say, you know, we have, like he said, a tractor trailer, that type of thing. And he's also monitoring too and going out to calls. And then there's also times of the, of the week when he is out on the shift, eight hours, four hours, just responding to emergencies in the city and other communities too, checking on crews, making sure the care is, the care is, you know, to the standard that we expect and doing that type of stuff. So he's also out random times.
Chris, how many ambulances do this Pennsylvania Ambulance own?
You know, right around 40.
Forty.
And plus, you know, because we're also service Wayne County and then our sister company in Wilkes-Barre, I'm not counting those, but it's transmit ambulances that we could call upon if we need to, but, no, Pennsylvania Ambulances, yes, 40, plus our quick response units.
So let me ask you this then. Are your ambulances, how many ambulances are active in the greater Scranton area? Scranton, Taylor, Wolf Forge, Dunmore during a 24-hour period?
Depending on time, obviously. You start your day out as you're busy, we have busy periods where we know we could have 15 to 20 ambulances on a time in daytime and there's after midnight when the call volume is very usually minimal, we're probably down to three and four ambulances plus quick response units. What the quick response units are, are a Ford Explorer, Tahoe-type vehicle with a paramedic and the equipment in that can respond out to the call, start care, check, triage, and then, you know, we can bring a transport truck in to transport if need be.
So the majority of your calls happen during the daytime? That kind of surprises me to be honest, in light of whatever accidents.
It's, you know, morning, once everybody starts to get up and then it peaks midday, going into the evening, and then it really quiet, really quiets down after midnight. Midnight to six is quiet.
So do you have two individuals per ambulance?
We do, and the quick response units have one paramedic.
Okay. Because there's been discussions about should the city get involved or start an EMS or ambulance company? And if we were to do that, and some of my concerns are this. Presently, the city of Scranton does not bear any of the risk in terms of EMS providing, because we're working with you and quite frankly, we do have a responsibility to provide EMS services. We're doing it through you, but we don't have a contract. I find that to be a little disturbing, quite honestly. I would like to see that change if we continue with this model. But secondly, my concern is if we go into developing our own ambulance company, I would think minimally, we would need at least four ambulances minimally. And then they would have to be staffed, two persons per ambulance, three shifts. That's, so that's six guys, six times four is 24 new, unionized, trained individuals that would be then responsible. All of the risks would be borne by us, plus we'd have to buy the ambulances, maintain the ambulances. I'm just concerned that we spent 30 years in financial distress and, you know, we've been out of it now for three years. And quite frankly, we have a triple B rating as far as our S and P rating. So we've come a long way is my point. And financially, in discussions I've had with numerous people, and people that even work in EMS have indicated it would cost the city $2 to $3 million a year to properly operate its own ambulance service. And then I was told, well, that's just the price of doing business. But my point is, we presently have a model that is handling, you know, and I'm more encouraged, I'm more encouraged by, obviously the response times I heard tonight compared to what I saw in that report. And obviously, you know, maybe your numbers are a little low, maybe their numbers are a little high and maybe, I don't know. We're trying to rely on everybody being honest with us. So at the end of the day, I don't like to see us create a crisis that doesn't exist. I'd like to sit down at the table, I would encourage the administration to sit at the table, back and forth, and just like any other thing. Anytime I've ever, I've ever settled a contract, teachers, paraprofessionals, maintenance, what have you, there was always compromise. And, you know, if the city has a list of issues or concerns that they have under the current model and they would like to address those in a contract, then so be it. And if you have concerns, because obviously you are running a for-profit, you guys can't do this and just do it out of the goodness of your heart. It costs money to own ambulances, to train people, to pay people, you know, wages. I don't know, are your guys unionized?
So we are not unionized?
Okay.
And I agree with everything that you said, just starting to try to touch on a few of those things. You said, you know, four ambulances, that's a great start. That would be a great start. I'll tell you, with four ambulances, you'll probably cover about 60% of your calls and you'll need backup. With the current ER wait times, you might not even cover 50% of the calls with four ambulances. So you'll need another company to back you up, whether that be us or who, you know, somebody would have to back you up when you're unavailable because those four trucks will be tied up at the hospital and waiting an hour to two hours and unable to respond in emergencies. Okay, so that's one, you know. I think every, all your points, you know, $4 million, three, I think that's right there. That's what it would cost the city for those four ambulances, but then you're only going to capture 50, 60% of your calls. So that's not going to work.
And my main point, regardless of all that, is that the present model doesn't seem to be broken to me. What I think is broken is the understanding between the city and Pennsylvania Ambulance that number one, we're the only community that does not have a contract with you, yet you're still fulfilling our needs. So if our city has concerns about delivery of services, about response time, about whatever, then, you know, let's sit at the table and figure it out. Because under the current model, we're not bearing any of the insurance costs, any of the risk. You're bearing, I hate to say it, but you're bearing everything. The cost of it, the risk, everything is being borne by all of you.
I couldn't agree more and I would look forward to as soon as possible sitting down and working together towards, you know, for both sides to collaborate and figure out how we can even make these times better and we can work together, which the times I believe are exceptional already, but how do we make it better? How do we work together to even make it better? Is it sometimes when we're short, there's times when we're short, do we put a paramedic and a firefighter, whatever it is? We're willing to work with the union, with the fire chief, with everybody, together. That's what we're here for. That's why I got into this business, Dr. Bernetti. That's why we have Dr. Morgan. We believe we're here to stay and we want to work together with you guys.
Well, I would think that would, that's something that the administration would have to do. I mean, we could certainly, I would ask, Frank, I don't know if my colleagues are in agreement, to send a letter to the mayor and ask if they can set up a meeting with the chief to sit down with Pennsylvania Ambulance and see if they can arrive at an equitable agreement and come up with one of those contracts to allow us to continue to provide medical service to the city without us having to bear all of the burden of having to get into the ambulance business, which we were at one time, once before, and there was a reason why we're not in it anymore. So, but if I'm the only one recommending it...
If you, if you would like to make a motion to that effect, I would second that motion.
I would like to make a motion to that.
Then I would second that.
I have motion to second.
Can we, can we?
We'll do that, we'll do it at the meeting.
I think we have to, yeah, that can't be done in caucus.
It's a caucus right now.
Sorry about that.
I got lost. But, and if, hey, if things don't work out at that meeting, you know, I don't know, then we, then we look at Plan B. I don't know, but at the end of the day, communication I think is key and that's how you resolve, resolve things. First, you need to sit down and talk and find out what the major concerns are and then see if you could arrive at an equitable agreement and try to move forward from there.
Absolutely. We're prepared and ready.
Okay, gentlemen, will you provide city council with a copy of your PowerPoint presentation that you presented this evening? There's a lot of stuff in there, I just couldn't keep up, so...
Yes, we have that for you.
Perfect. Anyone else?
I just want to thank you for coming and this is a great start.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and having us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time and what you're doing for the community, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
We will take a few minutes, we'll get all this cleaned up here and then we will be back for our normal meeting. Thank you.